To the flag of United States of America and to the full power of our churches. One nation under God, in the name of the Lord, with equal justice for all.
Want me to jump right in?
Tim has assured me that this is probably going to be like a 10-minute meeting. So we'll get everyone home to their families as quick as we can. Is there any old business that we need to?
No, there isn't.
Anything from the town administrator's report?
No, I just, I thought we'd keep this streamlined and to talk about the budget and to talk about the tax title work that's being done currently.
Okay. All right, so we do have Mr. Peter Brown with us with the Ambrosia and Brown L.P. They're the town's tax title attorney. So we'll get a quick update on his firm's efforts. And so, welcome, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just very quickly, what you have in your package is just some, a few simple slides that I put together to sort, that really pulls together conversations that Peter and I have had. And then the last page is actually the original document that Peter's firm put together that really identifies the different categories of tax title that we have. And Peter will talk about that. But it really is a bit of a culture shift that we're sort of engaging on in Holbrook here where we're, you know, the actions that we're starting to take on properties that are in tax title resulting in a lot of folks visiting Town Hall to speak with the treasurer and treasurer staff. And they're doing a yeoman's job of directing these folks appropriately to the Ambrosia and Brown, to Peter Brown and his staff. But it is a culture shift and it's a challenge to, it's difficult, I know, for Paul wherever he is, I know he's here somewhere, to send that message and be clear. But it is important for this to be successful that we do that. So having said that, I'll pass it over to Peter to kind of go through the more of the details.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as a general overview, we were brought in by your treasurer and town administrator a few months ago to come in and evaluate the status of tax collections in the town and what the town was holding in what we refer to as tax title. Tax title means that a property has unpaid taxes for at least one fiscal year, typically more than that, and the town has gone through the process of sending out not only the tax bills but legally required notices and has put a lien on the property called a tax taking. And what that process does is secures the debt that the town is owed. And that property owner or the bank that has a mortgage on it is responsible for 16% interest that's set by state law in order for those taxes to be paid. The process from there is that if people do not pay their taxes when due, it then goes to that tax-taking phase. If it does not get resolved within at least six months or maybe even longer after various notices, then the property proceeds into land court. And that's a process where the town seeks to foreclose on its lien and acquire title to the property. The goal for all municipalities, including the town of Holbrook, is not to use the foreclosure process to acquire title. The goal is to get all of the taxes paid and get the people back on their feet and either continuing to utilize their property through a refinancing or realizing they might be in a property that they could no longer afford and sell it and move into something more affordable. But the end of the day, the 16% interest is not helping anyone, including the property owner, when they can refinance a mortgage at today's rates of 3%, 4%, or 5%. So the town had filed some foreclosure cases prior to us coming onboard, really not enough in order to address what is the tax title backlog together at the town. So what we've been asked to do is come in and work with the treasurer, town administrator, the various departments, and this board to assess where we stand and come up with a strategy to address all of this. And as Mr. Gordon said, really, this is about a culture change. A lot of times, somebody comes in and it's easy to put them on a long payment plan or try and not collect taxes from the person who's having some difficulty, but collect taxes from the other people who are paying. And here, it doesn't benefit anyone to let things linger on over time. We have to stay on top of it and make sure all the taxes are being paid and everyone's paying their fair share. So where you overall stand, and these were numbers as of the end of 2015, so they've changed since then, but the town was holding roughly $2.1 million in outstanding tax title. That is a lot of money for a town of this size. We have a strategy and a game plan to be able to go and collect the vast majority of that. Underneath the $2 million, you'll see what the treasurer, the town administrator, and I have referenced as being what we think we could overall collect through the process that I just laid out, the tax-taking process and filing cases in the land court. We think it's roughly about 1.3 to 1.4 million of that 2.1. And what that means is that those are properties that have value, that it's worthwhile to spend the time, resources, money to go and do the foreclosure cases, and in the end of the day, you'll have some value. Every municipality in Massachusetts has some amount of tax title that is land that is just not worthwhile to pursue. It costs, just in expenses alone, about $1,000 to file a foreclosure case in the land court. And town resources are scant, both in Holbrook and throughout the Commonwealth, so we don't want you spending $5,000 to collect on a property that's not worth $500. So we would roughly say about 35% of the 2.1 million falls into a category that will need some sort of alternative approach so that you're putting your time and resources into this process in a well-thought-out manner. We have about $685,000 that's tied up in properties that will require some research. And that means those properties may have some value. They may potentially be developable. They may have some use to other departments in the town where it might make it worthwhile to go and do those foreclosure cases. That's part of the analysis that we are going to do. And we have a relatively small amount of money, less than $50,000 or $60,000, that fall into properties that really have very little value at all. So we, what we have tried to do is go through all of the properties, classify everything into proper categories, make sure we know exactly what we're dealing with, and develop a game plan and implement that game plan to start collecting all the taxes and work on changing the culture, as Mr. Gordon has said, so people know it's better off paying your taxes now than paying them later. It is painful to pay 16% interest. It is painful to incur all the costs of a foreclosure case, including court costs, recording charges, legal fees, that in the end of the day, a property owner or a bank has to pay at the end of the process. A lot of the time, a property owner or a bank might feel it's, the least debt, the least important debt that they want to address is the taxes owed to the town. The credit card company is calling them and threatening them on their phones every day. An electric company might shut off their utilities at their house, or the cell phone company might shut off their service. The towns sit there and we put on our liens and we go through this long process at the land court, and a lot of times, a property owner might be sitting back and just thinking, this is the debt I don't have to deal with today. And unfortunately, they need to understand that it is the most important debt. It is their home, it is their property, and 16% interest can end up taking away their equity in the home very, very quickly. And so that is kind of the message that we're out there to send. We are very proud of the fact that our law firm doing this for over 15 years for municipalities across the state. We have an exceptional record of having a less than 1% record of properties that we file in land court and that we work on that end up going to foreclosure judgment and going to auction. And the end of the day, if the town forecloses on a property, you end up owning it outright. And so if you foreclose on a property for $100,000 in unpaid taxes and the property's worth $500,000, it gets sold at auction and the town gets the full $500,000. The owner gets nothing. The bank gets nothing. Town can't give it back to the owner even if they wanted to. As a result of that, we work with the owners, we work with the banks, we utilize this entire process so that the owners know that it should never, ever get to that point. We don't want it to get to that point. We don't want to end up owning the properties. And if there's equity in those properties, the people should be able to retain those and get those resolved. And so when I say that 1% number, that's our number of cases that we work on that end up going to a final judgment and auction. Because in a town where the lawyer and the town is actively working in the community, is talking to people and engaged in that process, that should very rarely happen. And so that is our record with all of our clients, and it's something that we will aspire to and we will achieve in the town of Holbrook. Lastly, I would just say that the, we have a number of cases that are going to be going into land court. The town has approved about 27 properties. That represents close to about $900,000 in unpaid taxes, and that will be going into land court probably as early as next week. We have a second round of properties that will be going in after that. But again, we've been working with the owners, communicating with them, and we have representations to us that those will be resolved in the short term. So we hope to not have to file those cases at all, and those cases get paid, and those all move on in a positive direction. I can report to you that in less than about two and a half months' work, we've already collected about $160,000 in back taxes owed to the town. We think we're off to a good start. We have a great working relationship with the town, and I hope to come back to you as often as you would like to provide updates and that you will see us working our way towards that $2 million in a fast way and helping to get that to boost your free cash, improve your bond rating, and overall, get these taxes paid to the community. We think we're off to a good start, and we think we have a good plan and a good team, and we should be very successful.
Okay. Thank you. A lot of numbers thrown out there. So to put things in more simpler terms, so we have a little bit over $2 million in outstanding taxes owed to the town. The 35% number that you threw out there, that is taxes that are tied up in a very complicated, is that like the Blanchard, Blanchards, you know, the, is that part of that, or is that?
One of those lower categories, yeah. That's probably, I assume, that's in the potentially recoverable.
Likely not worth pursuing.
No, no, it's potentially recoverable, but it's sort of a special project, and that's...
But more research is definitely needed to untangle.
Yes.
Because I think we've been trying to untangle that for several, several years.
Yes.
Peter's looking forward to the challenge once we get through some of this other stuff.
Yes.
It's all relative, I guess, Rick.
That is a special project. That's not included in this $2 million.
It is not, okay.
What I would say the 35% represents, those are properties of questionable value. And so we want to do some research to make sure we're putting the money in the, to the right properties, at least first, as we start to make a dent in this $2 million. But that project that you mentioned, Mr. Gordon's given me a number of plans, maps, and history, and once we get this...
You haven't figured it out yet?
Not yet, not yet. But I look forward to the challenge, and I will report back that I've solved it. That's my promise. And I know this is being recorded, too.
So just to put that in perspective, that's approximately $378,000 is that. I call it the Crosby Land, Blanchard, there's a bunch of different, yeah.
Okay. So in the future, and it's not for Peter necessarily, but when we look at numbers, can we try to attach percentages to them? Just because it's kind of abstract without, when you don't know the whole, you don't know the whole number.
We have some thoughts on how to track this. We're just not, we're not quite there yet.
Whatever, yeah, that would just be my suggestion, because it, you know, it looks, you know, it's impressive, wow, you know, $168,000 collected from FY14, but in the grand scheme of things, you know, what is that, you know, that's less than 10% of what's actually owed, so.
Right. And I will say, I know Paul looked at this current year number, the 221, and he actually has, what, roughly $80,000? It just hasn't, this is coming right off the general ledger, it hasn't posted.
Yeah, about $70,000 that got ditched in the last week of February.
It's great. And I think the bottom line is that, you know, we're trying to keep the lines of communication open with the residents who are in situations like this. I know it's not easy, particularly with so many, you know, competing expenses that, in our world. So, you know, having someone who, you know, has, is firm but professional is incredibly important, you know, speaking for the board. We don't want to make, you know, the process, as ugly as it is, even uglier, you know, with personalities and things like that being attacked, you know, which is, you know, in some cases, you know, that's the, that's what happens when you deal with collections, you know, and it's such an ugly term, you know, and the fact that you're representing yourself in such a professional manner. And then, you know, by, as a result, you know, representing Holbrook in a professional manner is, you know, very, very much appreciated. This is an important thing to get a handle of, and I know it's a labor of love and it won't happen in two or three months, but as long as we actually have a plan, I think we're in good shape for the long term, so.
Mr. Chairman. I was wondering, I think the most important thing is how soon you get these accounts, you become in charge of them. Is there any idea of how late the town should be holding the items, or should they be rather rapidly? I know it's, you're working by the hour, so it isn't a percentage thing, and if Paul is tied up with people trying to make payments, I should think that most everything should be going through you. Any agreements, I think that they should be going through you, because it's not going to cost us any more, that much more money, other than your per-hour charge.
Correct.
And the longer that these people go, the bigger the problem, the less likely they're able to borrow the money on equity. And I think it takes a lot of the work off Paul's shoulders, but I really believe that it needs to be done right away. I don't know, you must have a formula, and if you do, I'd like you to discuss it sometime with Tim and Paul, so it gets done.
So we have, the town has put us in charge of every single property that is currently in tax title.
Okay.
So if someone is in tax title, it is considered a litigation matter that is being handled by the town, and that owner is automatically being referred to our office. And we have taken that burden off of the treasurer's office, and we are handling all communications and all correspondence. We're also working with them and communicating in a way so that the matter gets resolved as fast as possible, because I could go and explain to them what's going to happen next, and that it's much more expensive to pay in a month, or six months, or a year than it is to pay or resolve it today. We're also able to get into their personal situations, to the extent that they want to share it. And we can find people who aren't, might be elderly, who need some assistance. There might be someone who needs some refinancing assistance that doesn't know what their options are. And so we engage in those communications to lift people up so they can address their situation. The only matters that we are not handling is receivables that are not yet in tax title.
Why, but there has to be a point where they know they're going to go into tax title, and I think you'd be more effective if you had them before. And I'm not trying to push anyone that's in trouble or an older person like myself, but I really think it needs to be done immediately.
So we have some next steps here, and I think it's, you know, this new taking, or it's not a taking, it's a...
They're complaints.
Yeah, right. The 27 properties, that's first and foremost, and that's what they're executing on now. And then Peter and I and Paul need to go through this process of validating the existing properties, because there have been instances where you've gone to work on a piece of property, and then there's some, just, let's just say, odd circumstances, right, without getting into the details, that sort of, you know, create sort of a false start in some instances. So we got to go through this process, I think probably after town meeting, to sort of validate the existing properties, which would include looking at the, not just the tax title properties, but also the outstanding taxes. We have, if you noticed, on, we have outstanding taxes, approximately $800,000. That's on the top of the second page there, under other. And so that's, those are, that's monies that hasn't yet gone into tax title. Now, we have to sit down with Paul and figure out, you know, what these properties are, and I don't know if they all just should automatically go, we got to kind of, there's a little bit of case-by-case there. But that's a, that's a big priority to validate the tax title, validate the outstanding taxes, and validate the possessions to figure out what makes sense to actually auction off. Possessions, make sure that we have clear title.
And so let me just define what that means. So possessions are properties that the town in previous years has gone through the land court case and obtained the final judgment of foreclosure. So it's town-owned property, at which the town could either go and sell at public auction, pursuant to a state law that exists particularly for that purpose, or it could hold for municipal purposes. So once we get these other cases in the land court, our next big step is to go through that entire list, make sure, in fact, we own that entire list, those were all good cases and our title is good, and then come back and make a recommendation and approach of how to deal with those properties, to either both generate revenue and to get them back on to the productive and active tax rolls for the town.
You might actually, between now and then, identify, if there's some low-hanging fruit under the possessions, we might look at those and see if we can actually auction.
I also think the people that you do straighten out and bring them up to date, they have to be watched really closely, because a lot of them are just going to let it go back in. And you've solved the problem and you create one at the same time.
That's right.
So some plan of that is...
And so what we try to do is, you're 100% right. There are repeat customers when you're doing the tax title, the tax title work that I do. What we try to do is, when the people resolve the properties, we try to resolve their situations with them. And the goal is if they, not just pay the bare minimum, so they're still under water as they go forward the next day, but if they owe tax title and they haven't paid your fiscal 16, and they haven't paid their water sewer bill, or they haven't paid personal property taxes, try and get them to deal with everything and figure out a pathway forward in a way that will make sense. Some people will go and learn that lesson. There's others, sometimes you have landlords that like to pay taxes with cash rents when they come in and say, hey, I don't mind paying the 16%. So there is some of that. But we really work hard at trying to both educate and also get them to understand the pain that they felt in that 16%, so they don't want to go through it again. The 16% doesn't mean a whole lot when it's accruing on a spreadsheet and nobody sees it. But when somebody has to go and pay $15,000 to the town, and they realize $4,000 was principal, and $11,000 was interest, and it's really explained and showed to them in black and white, you would hope that that sends a message, a message that's learned.
It should, but it doesn't always.
Not always. We try, though.
Any other questions, first to Brown?
Just one thing, Peter, if you don't mind, could you comment on the receivership program? We plan on having something before town meeting on either 40U or 4058.
I can. So one of the other services that our law firm, which we represent, again, municipalities across the state, is dealing with what we call problem properties. And those could be abandoned properties, it could be residential, commercial properties, properties that are not up to code, that are not compliant with fire safety or police issues, but really properties that are affecting in some way the quality of life of the residents, the business owners here in the town of Holbrook. And what we found, it's something we had to get into, because if somebody's not paying taxes on their property, a lot of times, it kind of goes hand-in-hand with people not keeping up their properties and there being code violations or public safety violations. So one of the things that our office does is we work with inspectional services departments about identifying these properties, issuing appropriate orders, using the courts to get access to the properties, issuing what we call orders to correct, and using the power of levying code violations and fines that could actually go onto the tax bill and then go with the tax title, that really has the force and effect of forcing property owners or banks that have essentially a title to properties that are sitting on for dealing with properties today and not letting them sit for months or years on end. So the town administrator's going to have me come before town meeting to discuss this program and try and get this up and running. But I've already met with a number of members of the inspectional services department. I think you have a great team there, and we think we could deal with not, with some of these tax title properties on two sides of the coin. One going after them for back taxes, but others, if they're not keeping up their properties, could be dealing with them with code violations and things of that nature. There's also a program that we have for court-appointed receivers, and that's the receivership program that the town administrator is mentioning. And what that is, is when you have a really bad property, where you've identified the violations, you've given the proper legal notices to the owners and to the banks, and you said, either you better fix it, or we're going to go to court and get someone to fix it. And if they don't, we're allowed to go to court and have the court appoint an independent person, typically a contractor, who will come in and at their own cost and expense, not the town's, under court supervision, will come in and fix the property and take something that's, say, urban blight and revitalize the neighborhood, bring it 100% up to code. And then, at the end, they get paid by selling the property under court supervision and court approval. And you have a property restored to the active tax rolls and brought up to code. So it's, that program works well. We've given a number of examples to Mr. Gordon, but also by having the power and the support of the administration and of the Board of Selectmen, a lot of times, by threatening those actions, by getting administrative search warrants to do inspections of properties, to issue code tickets, a lot of times, the owners will take care of the properties themselves, and you never even have to go to court. But it's been a program that's been successful throughout the state, and it's really changed neighborhoods, and it's something that...
And not just tax title properties. It could be somebody that's fully current with their taxes.
And a lot, a lot of times, we see, and we think we have a few of these in the town of Holbrook, we've reviewed a list, but really where this has become prevalent in Massachusetts is the result of the foreclosure crisis. So between about 2004 and 2007, banks throughout the country and the world gave ridiculous mortgages. They gave $400,000 mortgages to people who couldn't afford them, might not have known any better, but the house is only worth $200,000. It just was never worth what they gave the mortgage on. They came in, they sent their foreclosure notices, the owners picked up and left, or they're sitting in the house rent-free, tax-free, but the house is essentially gone. The banks got their money when we, as U.S. citizens, bailed them out several years ago, so they don't really care about the property. And so they let the properties get run down, they don't keep them up to code, they're not responding to your inspectional services department. And so we found this tool to be incredibly successful in getting the banks to go in and accept responsibility for the properties and becoming partners with our communities, because if they get $100,000 in code tickets and that gets added on to their tax bill, they learn a very quick lesson, as you sort of said, that it's time to cooperate and start being partners with the community and not causing problems inside of it.
That's great. Excellent.
That's great. And I know there will be articles that will be considered. I don't know if the Finance Committee has any questions for Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, thank you so much.
I look forward to coming back and giving you an update at a later time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Next order of business is the review of this Board of Selectmen's proposed FY17 town budget. So I first wanted to thank Tim and Margie for their efforts in working collaboratively with all of the town departments and the school district to come up with, you know, a budget that I think, you know, again, speaking for the board, that we feel very comfortable with. I know it's not, it's not an easy, easy task, and we're certainly setting, I think, the right foundation for future years with how we go about developing our town budgets. So thank you to the two of you. Appreciate it.
And if I may just comment that, you know, it was, first of all, the intent here is not to circumvent the process that we've done in the past, but to really inform the process and let the Finance Committee, you know, provide them with more, really more direction in terms of what the administration is interested in seeing in the budget. And that's something that we hadn't been doing for a number of years, so getting back on track with that. I know it's, it's a bit of a change, but I think, you know, it's, to your point, it was a collaborative effort to include the Finance Committee. And they, and I think what I was looking for, for an outcome from this, once we go through it, is hopefully a recommendation to the Finance Committee for consideration of this, because it's still the Finance Committee's responsibility to bring a budget, to bring recommendations on a budget, whether they created it or the Board of Selectmen created it. They're, they bring, they make recommendations regarding the budget to town meeting. So I guess the best thing to start at the, oh, actually...
We wanted, yeah, we wanted to, we'll jump into it, you know, I don't know if, Kevin, you want to go line by line by line, or if there are things that pop out that, you know, are worthy of discussion, you know, I don't necessarily think this is a three-hour discussion. There's a few points, I think, and in theory, I think we all kind of, you know, are on the same page. There might be a couple of different ways of getting there. And so I'd want to restrict the conversation to really that, just in an effort to save, to save time, so.
And I think there's, to your point, there's probably a handful of areas, I think most of, and by the way, just so everybody knows, department heads and those watching, the chairman of the Finance Committee and I have met a number of times, and kind of, it's a reconciliation process. We made sure that we're at the same place with revenue and total requests, and so it has been a partnership on many fronts here. So I appreciate that cooperation. So I appreciate that cooperation.
I do appreciate that. So Kevin, what I wanted to do is defer to Chairman George, who made a request to handle the school budget first and obviously it's a pretty big budget. And Mr. George, if you wouldn't mind coming forward for some discussion. And I guess if you wanted to set the table with what you were trying to accomplish with the budget, any highlights, new things that we could expect for the new FY '17 budget that are kind of unusual and enhancements to our students' educations?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first, I just want to say overall, it's been a great pleasure working with Mr. Gordon and the various departments to create a budget that we can all agree upon. And I can say, based on the proposed budget before you, that the school committee is, you know, would accept those figures in the budget and would endorse them as well as the other departments. So we, you know, feel that this is in some sense a unified budget. I want to go and say, obviously, we were seeking a lot more money than this and that, for example, the cuts from the proposed budget that we would have had at 3% are approximately like $263,912. So the question for us or the challenge going forward is, our overall philosophy is to try to keep what we need to do to sustain, you know, the things that are predictable every year. And many of those are contractual changes that come about and certain operational costs. But also with the new school going forward, it's important for us to be adding certain courses so that people are getting the message that not only are we building a new school building, but we're also building a curriculum that is attractive. As you know, we have an inordinate amount of members who will leave at a certain age. We're trying to make it attractive enough to people to realize they're going to get a big bang for their buck by keeping their kids at the Holbrook schools. So this year, we're hoping, for example, to add Latin to the foreign languages. We're one of the few schools in the area that only has a one language offering right now. So, and there are other areas where we're trying to add certain things. We've had, it's the one predictable, unpredictable budget in a sense because we have schoolchildren who come in or people that are students who have special needs, for example, and there are certain costs. But we feel comfortable at the 3% budget that's been proposed that we can meet our goals for next year to do that. Where obviously, what was nice about this whole process is rather than it being a sort of an antagonistic process, it's more of a dialogue, I think. And I think that's very important because, you know, quite frankly, ultimately, when you look at budgets, you want to see, you know, what the costs are over a number of years, what are some of the trends. And as we have the new software system, for example, come in, there'll be a lot more transparency on certain things. It'll eliminate a lot of the red herrings and allow us to have a more mature, I think, discussion about, you know, budgets. And so I'm very pleased with this budget, the way it's been. And I would endorse it and recommend it, not only for our school department, but we think that we certainly have no problem with the other budgets as well.
Okay. One sec, Mr. George. Any questions, Mr. George? The one thing that, you know, has come up, you know, in conversations with Tim is, you know, obviously, we know there's a bleed of the student body, you know, as they matriculate through eighth grade and into the high school. And obviously you get parochial school and that's always going to be there. And you have, you know, a certain percentage of, you know, high schoolers who are interested in the trades and Blue Hills is, you know, the right, the absolute perfect option for them there. Historically though, the numbers have, and you've seen the numbers, I'm sure, have really been a roller coaster where historically in the 70s or 80s, you know, we might have had 80 or 90 kids in the, in Blue Hills. And then over the course of the last, you know, 10 years, 12 years, whatever it is, that number's really, really ballooned. I think the numbers have stabilized a little bit, if not gone down. Is that? I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, you're not. But one of our goals, believe it or not, is with the, and that's why we're going to try to be adding incrementally programs, is one of our goals is to lower, you know, we understand there'll be certain legacy students who want to go to a private school or certain specialty students who want to go to a specialty like the Norfolk Aggie School or Blue Hills. But we certainly don't want students to leave because they don't think that the course offerings are right. And that doesn't make any sense. So our hope is that we're going to be recapturing some of those students and so that the percentage will be more in line with what we think what it should be. And that's part of our goal. But secondly, again, I want to reiterate that what's, this has been a conversation that's been missing, having the departments who after all spend every day working on these budgets, day in and day out, getting together and talking about the budget and making the process, I think, a little more predictable. And so we look forward to examining those trends that you've mentioned. But yeah, we do have our eye on that. That's one of our priorities.
And I guess just to further the conversation, you know, looking at what can be done, you know, is it a marketing campaign, is it a, you know, have you seen us lately type of campaign with, you know, we're sitting on a level one school district and thank you superintendent for your shepherding that through, a level one school and a high school and a level two district, you know, overall. Fantastic results. And, you know, that should be the springboard that gets or keeps, you know, these students in the district as opposed to paying out because I don't have to remind you, you know, $18,000, $19,000, $20,000 for every student to educate them in another district when that money can be spent here in Holbrook for all the things, you know, that you're, all of those great expectations that we have for the high school or for the other grade levels. And it just, to me, it's just a shame that that money is pouring out of the district in such great numbers.
I'm glad you brought that up, Chairman Moore, because, you know, again, communication obviously is a lot more fractured in today's age than it was. We really don't have, you know, reporters going to meetings and, you know, reporting the detail that you had, let's say, 10 or 15 years ago. But for example, at the high school level, there've been a series of meet and greets that have actually tried to include some of the vendors in the town. And, you know, the admissions are very impressive from the Holbrook High School graduating class. I mean, everyone who isn't aware of that or has a child who, you know, they want to go to a college of any substance, to look at the graduating class and the acceptances that we've had. We've had Ivy Leaguers, we have some of the BCS, the BEUs, we're up there with any school. And so I do believe when people start to see that and understand that and then see the course offering. So, you know, because I agree with you, the worst thing that can happen is you don't see, let's say, I'm just using foreign language as an example, you don't see enough foreign language. They say, oh my, I've got to send my child to some other school. And you really can't afford to do that. So the family gets into debt. Maybe that goes to your first client there, but I mean, your first guest. But the, why go into a tremendous amount of debt if you can get the course offerings at the public school? That's always been the promise of the public school to be the level that elevates the community. And I think we're on the track to change that with the board's help, with, you know, all the department's help. And that's why, you know, we are excited about the next few years. And I agree with you, we're going to continue to try to, you know, pass the word along. And I appreciate you bringing that up.
Sell it. I mean, I think that's, you know, it's just, you know, business kind of one on one. You know, we have a great product that we have some people who might not know about it and we just need to change some minds.
Yeah, I agree with you.
If we can do that, we keep the dollars in the district. And with that, you know, it's self fulfilling because we just get better and stronger with the more money that stays in the district.
Well, we're certainly going to continue to do some outreach programs that are just that. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. Kevin, do you have any questions for schools or anyone of the board? No?
No, no worries.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say something. I think that we have a great future and the schools do, but I think that they're neglecting the success that they've had and not letting people know about the students and how far they've gone. I think that's what's wrong.
I think that's a good idea.
You sit back there and say, geez, it's going to be nice. Tell about the people.
You know, I think that's.
You had a girl that was number one at Holbrook High and in freshman year she was number one at BC. Those people, get them back. You've got a young man that graduated five years ago that is a New England Law and he's number one in this class. Those are the things. You need to get them in. You need to sell it to people and tell them.
Mr. McGee, you're absolutely right. We're going to make every effort we can to get that word out about all these things that are going on. We're even going to be, you know, some private individuals are getting together to try to start a school foundation. Hopefully that will even further enhance the teachers and some of the offerings that we have. So there's a lot going on right now in the Holbrook Public School District that people should be paying attention to and I appreciate you bringing up those examples.
I think that you don't have to go back to Andy Cad, who was a tremendous success. There's been a lot of success recently and I just think that what you need to do is to bring some recent, the last 10 years graduates back and speak to the parents and the kids in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade, have nights.
Well, you've got some successful graduates on this board. So I'm not going to go back. I don't need to look any further than that.
No, really, I mean it. You need to sell it.
I appreciate that.
Whatever we can do in a collaborative effort, you know, it's, we all have the best interests of the town in mind. And educating our youth is obviously pinnacle.
And we look forward to working with you all on that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. George. Okay. We'll go.
You want to start at the beginning? I guess, keep in mind, we have all the department heads for the most part are here, so we appreciate them being here. And so this is an opportunity, not just, I think, for the board to ask them questions about certain things in their budget, but if there's something that the department heads feel is, you know, isn't quite what they were looking for or is more than they wanted, this is their opportunity to come up and communicate that. And then at the end, so we can just start at the beginning and walk through, at the end, I just want to point out.
Yeah, if we don't have to go, I mean, if there's anything that sticks out, great. We don't have to go line by line.
And at the end, I just want to hit on some things that I think overall are positives in this budget and there are some negatives in this budget, no question about it. So we got general government first.
So with this, obviously, there's an increase in town administrator salaries there. We finally have a full-time administrator that's paid the market rate, so don't have any issues there. And if anyone's, you know, driven by town hall at, you know, 8:30, 9:30, 10:30 at night on a weeknight, you see a white Nissan out front. So we certainly get our money's worth from the increase in town administrator being a full-time person. So we do appreciate that. Elections is another, is another one that's kind of gone up a little bit from where we were in 2016. So Janie, that's just the election, the election cycles that we're talking about? Okay. So we have three elections in FY '17 versus two from the previous year. Okay.
And then just as we get into finance, financial services, under the finance committee's reserve, there's sort of a new line. I know we'll figure out how you guys want to handle that. But that is the, sort of an estimate of increases, salary increases.
A placeholder for what we expect. Okay.
For either non-union or agreements that are terminating that aren't in the budget.
Finn Combe, are you good with that? I mean, obviously it has to be somewhere.
Yes, we have a placeholder in our budget that we carry a figure at the bottom for miscellaneous articles that come up at town meeting.
Okay. So same theory, just a different methodology.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine. And then we have treasurer, collector, we have salaries down slightly. And this is, what did the note say here, Tim?
So we initially had it, if you notice from what they requested, it was, that's where we were going to try to get an HR function operating out of the treasurer's office with some additional part-time help to relieve the window and then have one be committed. So committed to HR. And we just, we just can't do it. We just don't have the funds to do it. Why that's down just a fraction, I'm not really sure from last year in terms of their.
That was, what was on the budget that was presented as the additional hours that were needed. But we also had the same question that we were trying to get, we're going to get answered from Paul's office. So it might fluctuate a little bit to get back up again. We're not exactly sure. But what they did was taking away that additional hours that was requested for the human resource position and then.
There's $800 there. It's $800 lower than what was appropriated last year. We'll get with Paul and figure that out.
And then we have deputy collector, not, vacancy in that, in that position?
Yeah, so maybe you can explain that better than I can. I mean, I do know this, I guess, talking to Paul, the auditors. So the deputy collector is paid essentially $47,000, but the money's collected directly from the collectee. So we haven't been showing it anywhere and I guess, you know, we'll have to talk because apparently the auditors would like to see it on both sides. So it would be an expense here, but it would be coming in as other revenue.
Our only question is going to be, is DOR okay with that process of showing it as a other revenue as well as.
We'll talk to him tomorrow.
It's just an accounting thing. It's not changing the practice of that position. It is only paid from receipts generated from that position.
So no impact on the bottom line?
No.
All right. Then we have, next subject, our next area is public safety. So public safety building. So we have here, so these salaries are the salaries for cleaning and maintenance?
They are. That's correct.
Which is a fairly modest amount of $12,000. And expenses seem to be a little bit different from what was.
Right, so they had requested 30, an extra $20,000 in capital maintenance. I know Chief McFadden was being very proactive and basically saying, you know, this building's going to need certain maintenance. And I think you, the concept was you wanted to just be in some kind of a reserve, which is a great idea. It is. We just can't do it here.
A lot of great ideas that we just can't do. And so don't take offense, chief.
I would say a little more than a great idea. There are some specific things in that building that are at the end of their useful life. And whether we budget for it now or you can squeak out another year or you have to come midway through the year because something's breaking down, that is, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are some things that have reached, according to the manufacturers, the end of their useful life. So that was the idea here, was trying to start that process. The building is over 10 years old now, so.
So maybe that's, maybe that's a capital committee, a capital committee item that should be taken up, you know, just on a regular basis. And I think that, you know, with the permanent school building committee and kind of morphing that into, you know, a committee that actually oversees the non-school side of the town, that might, we might be able to leverage those expertises to figure out exactly what's needed and get best pricing on repairs. So.
The only thing to note on that is the capital requirements right now are $35,000 and a lot of these projects that might come up are less than that amount. So just something to keep in mind as we go.
Okay.
And that's what we're going to look at at one of our meetings, to lower that threshold. Because $35,000 seems awful high.
Yeah, okay. And then we have with fire, we have.
I was going to ask, so Chief McFadden or I suppose, you had $109,000 voted for expenses in FY '16 and that dropped to $97,000. And based on my review, it looked like in '16, there was a request for $9,000 for LP, chief's vehicle and additional $5,000 to replace the equipment. I don't know, do you want to comment?
There were some special needs, special items that were voted at the special town meeting to fund certain things that ended up falling through the expense line item that were one-time expenses. So that's why you see reduction in the expense side of the line item.
And the chief's vehicle comes out of operating versus the capital? Is that traditionally how it's been?
Yep.
Yeah, actually, police does the same thing.
We've been doing that for a while. We've been having them put every year one lease payment in so that we build it up so that they can purchase the vehicles as needed. And it's been working.
So, good, yeah, no. And that's why it doesn't seem to be a bliss.
It's the balance of the expected life also when you go to the capital plan. It's supposed to have an expected life of, I think it's five years. And you could say, most of the police vehicles are less than five years for sure. The chief's vehicles, could you say are five years? You know, you're on the fence there. So the practice of just building it into the budget.
I don't know. Eddie O'Brien, I think he got 20 years out of his last vehicle, so you have something to shoot for. But then, but then you get what you get, right? When you get stranded in Randolph, because it doesn't start.
And it's a chief's vehicle, but of course the trucks are all, I believe they're all through. they're, they're all through capital.
Yes.
Correct. Oh, and those are, those would be ticket items, okay. All right, and E.M.T., so this is, is fairly, it's an unknown, at least, so we're looking at the request of eighty-five thousand, we dropped that down because we just are unsure of what the requirement is gonna be for IV pumps on the ambulances. Okay, and, and do we have an idea when that legislation or, or, or demand is gonna be, come to fruition, if, if at all?
Just said, required by 2017.
Yeah, we talked about it, wasn't, it hadn't been, it hasn't been, it hasn't been, the regulation hasn't been promulgated yet, correct? So they gotta wait for a regulation. Has the law been passed?
It's time for the overall ambulance.
Okay, all right. So they're still waiting for a regulation to be promulgated. If it's gonna be promulgated in seventeen, there's a chance they might say, you know, effective whatever, July first.
Yeah, pushing, pushing it out a little bit. So obviously it's something on the horizon, we have to be aware of.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I may, just on the, just to jump back up to fire salaries for a moment, so that the reduction from the request, I believe is related to bringing the overtime request, chief again was trying to be proactive in going at the high side of what could happen for overtime potentially within the fire department and what the finance committee, I think, did-
And we've dialed that back based on experience?
Trying to dial back to an average of the recent year.
Sure.
So, we're still fine-tuning that number, it's still a discussion point, but that's the idea.
So it, it's a little bit of padding, but not necessarily the-
It would be bringing it down to exactly an average of the last three, the finance committee's recent discussion was the average of the last three years, which is a little bit more than I think what's here, but in the same ballpark.
Okay, and I think that's a fair assumption, you know, why, why would it be anything higher than, you know, unless you're expecting a tremendous amount of injuries or retirements where you're gonna have vacancies that we need to cover, so. All right, we have animal control, which is, looks to be fairly level-funded, but we have, Tim, what's the, the-
I just, I just wanted to sort of document, I know the finance committee had asked about the volume of calls between Holbrook and Avon, so, I know you can't read the whole thing, so the volume of calls there, eighty-seven percent is Holbrook, twelve percent is Avon. Avon funds us at ten thousand dollars and, let's see, what did I add in here? I added the, so when I, when I factored in health insurance, the share, well, the share came out to be equitable.
Okay. All right, we have inspectional services, the demand was for a hundred and sixty-five thousand and, you know, this budget represents a hundred and fifty-eight, so a little bit short of, of what was demanded, but an increase over both fifteen and sixteen, and so this is just moving, how many hours is that for Arthur?
Five, five additional hours.
Five hours a week, so.
Five hours, yeah.
Thirty to thirty-five.
I'm sorry?
Thirty to thirty-five.
Bringing it to thirty-five, okay. All right, so, that's there. We talked about the, the schools already. Kevin, any commentary on the other, not necessarily our district, but Aggie or Blue Hills? Or school transportation?
Blue Hills' overall budget actually went up, I think it was two-point-seven percent roughly, and the Norfolk Aggie, right now, we're using, is a placeholder number based on the tuition letter that we received, but obviously we're still in litigation, so we would, you know, depending on town meeting, how we actually vote that money, but that is, would be the highest possible tuition for Norfolk Aggie.
Yeah, and I asked Tim in a, in a conversation that we had earlier, just to kind of see what the numbers are of the students, because it's, it's kind of, it's hard to, to really understand where the numbers are coming from when you don't necessarily have the per pupil, either per pupil expenditure and the, the number of pupils, you know, in, in each school. So, you know, on, on its face, you know, Blue Hills is, you know, one point, one point seven million for, for FY15 and that's gone up, you know, three hundred thousand in two, in two years. You know, what's, what's, what's the factor in, in why those numbers are, are the way they are? Is it just a blanket percentage, you know, they gave us a six percent increase like they have in, in years, years previous, or is there more, more students matriculating, you know, in the schools? So, better to understand, so Tim is gonna, is gonna work behind the scenes to see if we can get some numbers that, that would be, you know, give us some really intelligence that would be actionable.
Yeah, we do, but when Blue Hills comes, we have, I believe it's a hundred and fifty-nine students right now that are matriculating at Blue Hills. And the biggest jump, when you look at the Blue Hills, when it did go up, wasn't the number of students, it was actually a decrease in the number of students in Holbrook along with, so we had an overall decrease in our total students that were getting education through the Holbrook Public School System, whether it be public schools, Blue Hills, or Norfolk Aggie. That along with the way that the state formulas work caused a significant increase, our share that we had to pay to Blue Hills, not necessarily, again, for more kids, went up, because we, over the last two years, I wanna say, I don't know, there was a significant drop in sixteen, in fifteen to sixteen, in the total number of students that were counted.
And is that, is that the trend? I mean, have you mapped that out?
So this year it leveled off, this year we increased, I think it was net one student increase that was in the, in-
Sure.
-accounted for through Holbrook.
But that was on the back of a, of a, of a decrease in years, years past, so we're ahead, over the last three or four years, we're ahead, having less students matriculating through-
We have less students, we, we have less students than we did three or four years ago in the, in the-
Okay.
-accounted for within our cherry sheet.
Okay.
Or the chapter seventy-four, may I say.
That includes all students in the town.
That includes all students at Holbrook that is responsible for, the, the three districts that we send students to, whether it be public schools, Blue Hills, or Norfolk Aggie.
Sure.
And like I say, this, this year to last year is level for those?
Yeah, but just to, since you brought it up, just something I heard earlier in the conversation on education, the ten to twelve years have been fairly, the numbers we get from Blue Hills and from the school system have been fairly consistent on the number of students matriculating at Blue Hills. I'm not sure if those students are, are ones we need to educate. That is not, we can't compare that to the seventies, it's a different mindset towards these schools now than there was in the seventies. These are not just trades, or a lot of other things are doing, that, that is not an insult or a disparaging remark on the schools at all, they've done a fantastic job, so I, I think we've taken the approach, at least I know I have, in visiting whatever else, that is part of our school system, that is not something an alternative to Holbrook High School, it's part of the school system, so we, while we pay for it, it's a valuable education we give. I do agree that we need to promote everything you said before, and those are the ones, and I have, one student's gone everywhere, honestly, is the parochial schools, I have nothing against those, I guess I had one goal there, but that's what I think to Mr. George's point was, we're gonna offer these type of schools, and I think that's what was missing in the past when someone in my position made me the choice saying, well, you can't offer what I'm getting at a parochial school, whereas now I think they're making great strides to try to do that. I think those are students, I, I just don't like to lump Blue Hills in with that, because that, as far as my position, is, is part of our school system.
No, and, and I think, I think it, it is, and I agree with you, I think the, the evolution of Blue Hills has been amazing, you know, from, from, you know, strictly to the trades to more computer-based or, or more twenty-first century economy-based training, which is, which is, is great, but I think we can all agree that for many, many years, it was an alternative, not based on curriculum, it was because of safety or JV sports or, you know, whatever, some of the frill, the fringe benefits that, that the school provided, Olympic-sized swimming pool, you know, whatever, whatever it is, and, and that became an alternative to Holbrook High and, and I think we're really putting our best foot forward, you know, with the building of the new school and the, the addition of the different, different classes that, that could be offered in the curriculum, also evolving here in Holbrook. And so I would hope that that would be it, so it wasn't necessarily disparaged that it's, it's not a valuable part of our community educational system, but more that it was, I, I wanted to stop being, you know, a, an alternative because there is, you know, it's the worst, it's the better of two bad alternatives, you know?
It's the choice I took, because I don't wanna go there, whereas now it should only be the choice because that's better for me, which I think it's, they made a lot, honestly in my opinion, they made a lot of strides toward that. I think people going there now really just want to go there, maybe, or less, there's less people going just because they don't wanna go there, I don't know how to explain that. So I do agree with all the strides you make.
Yeah, no, agreed, agreed. So, having that information is handy, having it, you know, what's the trend, is, is certainly handy, because we can understand where it is, and then once we have that information, you know, then we as, as a community can help support the, the school district with, well, what's the plan? What are we gonna do, you know, from a, a marketing standpoint and really showcase that we have a tremendous amount to offer and that you don't have to go outside of, of district to get a quality education. And, and that's, you know, and I don't have the answer today, but, you know, I think if we put our, our heads together that, you know, we could assist as a community to really embrace what we have here, because it is tremendous, and the school committee has, has done a tremendous job with putting the right pieces in place for us to get the results that we've, we've been getting, so.
So I'll get with the finance committee, and I know you guys are the subcommittee for that, and pull some stuff together and-
In FY eleven, there was a hundred and forty-four Holbrook students in Blue Hills and FY seventeen is a hundred and forty-nine, so a net increase of five students.
Okay.
And it's been up, you know, it's bounced through that, through that thing, but we've been, last couple of years, steady at that, you know, one forty-five to one fifty number.
And you'll get that, I think, with, with, with legacy, you know, as my brother went there, my father went there, my mother went there, you know, and as kids get into high school age, it's, it's a natural choice, so I think we'll always have that, but I would love to, to be able to keep, you know, several hundreds of thousands of dollars in district and really see what, what, you know, the, the school can do with that, with that money here in, in district, so. Okay, good discussion, thank you for that. So moving on to Public Works, increase from where we, what we voted in FY16, but down from what their, their initial, their initial ask was, and this is just shuffling some, some equivalents.
It is, yes, it's, we had, went from ten to eleven, we had some summer help at one point that we discontinued in order to provide for the, that eleventh person.
Okay.
And the request, however, the request was really about additional administrative support, and again, no question, they need it, they're strapped down there, but it's just one of those things that we just can't do at this point.
Okay. Any comments, Kevin?
Yeah, just some of the discussions that the finance committee was having for the past two weeks centered around that elimination of the seasonal help, obviously getting, I don't wanna say more bang for your buck, but you're getting at a lower cost more hours worked, as well as more flexibility in the time of year maybe that you need it, you know, the intent, I think, when we went to ten to eleven was, it was subject to funding and then was it kind of clear through the process last year that the funding was gonna move from seasonal, it was actually budgeted in, in our internal, it's up to the department to figure out how they wanna allocate salaries, and that's, no, we're questioning that, but that it was moved from salaries to permanent men, or from seasonal to permanent men. So there's a good, there's a thought process with the, with the finance committee that it's, might be more beneficial to the town to have that be as seasonal as opposed to an additional person collecting benefits and, and at a much higher rate. Obviously, there's a, there's a, there's a skillset there that you don't get from a seasonal employee, so that's up to the department to figure out, but that's some of the logic, or is it come out of the clerical and say, you know what, I wanna back the seasonal or however that, that fix is, but that was some of the discussions that we've had around that position.
Okay, and Tim and I have talked about this, but, you know, there's, you know, that's a, that's a workforce that is, you know, aging, you got a lot of experience on, on the, in the department that would be, you know, preparing for retirement and then being replaced with, what's the highest step, Benji, in, in DPW?
A foreman.
Step, so that, what, is that, in a, in a, in a regular, is it, is it specific positions or is it step one, two, three?
It's me.
Yeah.
It's a supervisor.
Yeah.
And then it's a foreman.
And then foreman, and below foreman?
Equipment operator.
Okay, and so equipment operators are paid more, obviously, than, than an entry level, someone you hired, if we hired someone tomorrow.
Correct.
You know, so are we accounting for that in, in these numbers? Just trying to free up, you know, if there's possibility for free up, freeing up money? Those are discussions that you have, saying, you know, I, I anticipate one retirement this year, I anticipate three retirements.
I was just informed this morning, someone's gonna be retiring in September, so.
Okay, so that's obviously, you know, benefit-
The position doesn't go fill, then you've got some months there.
You've got some vacancies there, but then you're also replacing with, with someone who's, who's less skilled and obviously making less money than-
Yeah, so I guess in terms of the DPW, I don't wanna put words, I mean, we kinda have, hot off the press news here, you know, you have one, one person that recently resigned, is leaving, Chris Pelletieri, who has been an outstanding employee and we don't like to see him go, but he is leaving, and now we have Mr. Tucker who's retiring, so both within the past two weeks, so Benji and I have had some brief conversations about it between getting plaster prices and, you know, doing some demo, but more to fall.
Okay, it's, it's always good, I mean, I, in my, in my business life, that's, we always look at that, that's always a factor, when you have, you know, maybe a long-tenured director of a department and, you know, they, they move on, retire, transfer, whatever it might be, and they're replaced, you know, by someone who's not a senior, but, you know, and, and that potentially could be ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand dollar difference in, in pay and it's always born in mind when we look at budgets, so. All right, public services.
I'm sorry, oh, before we jump ahead, construction, maintenance, roads and sidewalks and snow and ice, the discussion with the finance committee that oftentimes these get overlooked and we just level, level fund them, I think it's been fifty-six thousand for the ten years I've been on the finance committee, we recently moved the snow and ice up to a hundred thousand dollars a couple of years ago, that we should start a process of increasing those at two and a half percent or, you know, a round number, close to two and a half percent every year so that, you know, we're investing in our roads and sidewalks, right now it's, it's not big money that impacts the overall budget, but we don't wanna let them go by the wayside of not investing in those and increasing them a little bit year over year, so.
Hence the fifteen, I was gonna ask you about that.
No, and I, I agree, and I think, you know, when it comes to, you know, roads and maintenance, you know, having the, the pavement committee that Kevin is, is a part of, I think is important because we're spending money in the, in the right areas, as opposed to, oh, it's ten years, we should just be doing this road, so I think it's more of a strategic approach and when you, when you incorporate that into, into this budget, you actually, the money goes a little bit further, you know, and so I think that's why we've been able to level fund it for as long as we have, because how long has the pavement committee been? Three years, maybe?
Yeah, three years.
Or maybe a little bit more, so for three years, we've actually had a strategy to, to kind of combat it and, you know, it's worked out, it's worked out, and it also helps spending, you know, some of the state money.
Yeah, we got forty grand last year, I think, from the state, or close to forty grand for-
And we're also looking at, you know, adopting more, more roads, getting, you know, more money from the state, so, you know, it's a, it's a multi-pronged kind of approach, but I, I hear exactly what you're saying and, and respect it certainly. So, public services, for the most part, everything is, is pretty, pretty much level, level-funded there. Some veteran services, I'm not sure if you have, again, statistics, you know, we, we're looking at spending, you know, eighty, eighty thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars this year, this upcoming year. Do we know how many veterans, like, how many veterans that help serve? And I know each veteran will have a different, a different need, and so some will get a little bit more of that, of that share of, of this money versus those who are-
Yeah, so I was told it was twelve veterans.
Twelve, okay, and historically, can we put, can we, can we date that back historically, you know?
Pretty close. Eight, so it's gone up, and he's been asking to have us level funding, bring anticipation of twelve.
Yeah, this is one of those accounts that, you know, it's obviously vital, it's federally mandated as well, and state mandated as well.
Keep in mind, it's seventy-five percent reimbursed.
And it is, it is reimbursed, but it's just good to know kind of where, where we're at, how many, how many people are, are taking advantage of the services that are being offered and what's, and what's the impact per, per person, just good statistics to have, so. Anything else from public services?
I just wanna make a general comment, there's a, a number of instances throughout the action, there's, there's exactly four instances of sick, retirement, sick leave, buy-back costs that I pulled out of the departments and put in a separate line, so if there are departments that have that, it's town clerk, accountant, police, library, it isn't a cut, it's just that I took that amount and moved it down into the benefits.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could jump back up for one moment to the public safety and the dispatch line item. Our committee is, and there's a lot more discussion to happen, but we've begun, obviously, you know, going through discussion points and areas that we think we need to dig a little deeper on, and one of them is, is the dispatch. As you know, we're receiving approximately $130,000 in new revenue next year between Abington, Sharon, and Whitman, new inter municipal agreements that have been signed. So there's a discussion that says that, well, some of that $130,000 should really be offsetting Holbrook's share of the budget, which we understand that we've been paying more than our fair share up till now, and that's part of the reason that those rates have gone up to those other departments. So we're in discussions trying to figure out how that fits into the budget, as well as the needs to increase the budget, but, you know, with a significant amount of additional revenue coming in, there is a belief that some of that should be able to offset some of our costs more than, pretty significantly, I'll say.
Okay. Chief Hook is here.
I thought I got off easy. Good evening. So we did receive additional revenue this year from some renegotiated contracts, but as the town knows, we have gone back the last few years asking for money because we've been running a deficit. Some of the other things that we need to offset this year, we have some contractual obligations that we're going to have to, the dispatch is almost a year without a contract, we're going to have some cost increase there. We have some, one of our funding sources is from an air mark that we get through the Norfolk County Fire Chiefs Association. It's not in the governor's budget this year, that's about $65,000 that we potentially will have to make up. It may go back in, get voted in, but it, currently it is not. The other thing that we have is some additional part-time shifts where, because we took on Whitman, we had to increase some staffing to cover those additional calls. And one thing that got, has been getting overlooked for the last few years is we have almost $1.5 million in equipment in the field and down at the station that links these communities back to Holbrook. And we haven't maintained that equipment, we haven't upgraded any of that equipment in a number of years, just because we haven't had the money to do so, so we need to really take a look at that and make sure that's getting maintained.
Okay. Do we need to increase the fees to the people, more than we have?
Well, I think over time we will. This was a negotiated, I mean, this was a pretty big increase for these towns, 46% for the town of Sharon, around 40% for the town of Abington, so that's a pretty significant increase.
Do you know how much less they are paying now than what they would have been paying or were paying?
Can you repeat the question? How much between this year and last year?
Yeah, how much are they saving by having us here?
So it's tough to tell because they had firefighters on the desk, they didn't have civilians, so they put, they took the firefighters off the desk and put them onto the street.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so I did an analysis based on, to try to ascertain what that, what that value is to another, to another town, based on civilian dispatchers, what our rate is for civilian dispatchers, just based on their health insurance, an average expense per employee, and an average overtime rate. They would spend, the town with four civilian dispatchers plus three part-timers would spend about $308,000 per year. So by come, and that's just in the direct costs, not including pension costs, not including OPEB, not including, you know, other overhead. So I think by paying $150,000 to us, that's a pretty good deal. But I think it's probably, in the grand scheme of things, and I want to applaud Director Hook for going out and getting more money than we had last year or this current year, but I do think that they're still getting a very good deal, and that they should be paying a lot more, and it would still be savings. If they paid $200,000, that'd be more in line, and they'd be saving $100,000 that they would have paid in direct costs, and that, that actually would start to offset, because we own these people. So we own their health insurance, we own their pension, we own their OPEB, and OPEB is a huge liability for us. We own, if they go out on sick leave, and we have to pay overtime, we own that. We don't go back to them and say, hey, you owe us more because we had overtime issues or a machine broke and we had to have higher expenses. So I do think that we do need ultimately more money from them to really offset the full cost of operating a regional dispatch.
Yeah, I think we need to just be very strategic with that, because they're, we're not the only game in town, unfortunately, and so the contracts are, you know, are what they are, and, you know, there are other communities that are doing the same thing we are, and they're clamoring for more, more communities to consolidate into their group, so we, I think we have to be, you know, very cautious about, about how we do it. We don't have a gun to anyone's head, and we can, you know, looking for another 10 or 15%, we can easily lose, you know, the entire thing, so.
How long are the contracts?
Three years.
Three years.
Three years.
Are there increases built into it?
2% increases each year.
Two?
Which cover, I mean, that covers our, our day-to-day, but not necessarily biting into the nut that we...
Well, I mean, and our health insurance is going up 4.8% this year, or 4. something percent. So 2% doesn't go a long way when you talk about that. Our retirement costs are going up 10%.
No, no, I, I, and it isn't the first time you've heard this, right? No, so, you know, we'll have to, we'll just have to do that balancing act and just be very, this is a very fragile situation.
So one thing that Director Hook and I did early, I don't know, November, December, it was early on, we just took a look at total costs as best we could, meaning, you know, the direct costs are easy, but, and the health insurance costs are easy, because you can identify the people and what plans they're on. You know, we did an estimate for retirement, which is, you know, we're not going to hire an actuary to tell us exactly what it is, but did a rough estimate based on employees, and did, did a square footage facility charge. So we came up with, you know, total program costs of one point, a little over 1.1 million, we're bringing in one point, a little more than that, like 20,000 or 30,000 more than that. So with the, the increase with Sharon and Abington, you know, that kind of, there's a little more equity there now. And with Holbrook, we are still off a little bit, and there's, our contribution is, is higher than the allocated cost by, you know, roughly 80, 80,000. However, what you have to keep in mind is, without the, without this program, we'd still have to have how many employees. So there is a balancing act, and it's sensitive, and I think, I think there's a, there's a maturity process that's going on now with the, with the center, in terms of becoming a little more independent, looking at call volume as a driver, renegotiating the contracts as has happened, potentially bringing on another town, which will change this entirely. But it is important also to have the infrastructure in place to be able to do all that.
And you did get policemen back, too. You got more policemen on the street.
Yeah, right. Which was not a savings to the town, but it was a value added to the town, and, so I don't know, Steve, if you have any more to add to that.
I'll leave you with this. The other towns contribute combined $609,000, okay, that's what we, we make in revenue, so to speak. The town of Holbrook contributes health insurance, assuming everybody who works for us, we have 10 full-time employees, assuming all of them take family plans and retirement included. I mean, there's a lot of indirect costs that are tough to figure, but that comes out to $613,000. So, I mean, it's pretty close. If you take the call volume, which is about 44, 43%, somewhere around there, we're getting there. It's going to take a little more time, but we're getting there.
And the other, the other interesting point that I didn't think of until we sat down is, call volume is an excellent measurement, because it's probably the best thing you can use, but it doesn't account for walk-ins, which is basically all on Holbrook. And, you know, it's not that you have a constant flow of people going in there, but, you know, I mean, I probably go in there two or three times a year, just, I don't know, for something.
Medical emergency services?
Also business.
You gotta need a defibrillator, boom.
Also business calls and permits and stuff like that, you know, clerical stuff that we're doing as well.
Okay.
So we're close.
Awesome.
I just have one question, the 609,000, can you break that down, so I can understand of how you're getting the 609,000 from the other towns?
Sure. 150 from Abington, 150 for Sharon, 50 from Whitman, Norfolk County, 65 and change.
And that might go away?
What is it?
That's not in the budget for that.
Not in the budget, correct?
Okay.
Currently.
Yeah.
Might get overwritten. 15 from Hazmat, and 179, 280 from 911.
And the 179, 280, is that, how much of that is for Holbrook's portion that we would have gotten had we not, had been a regional PSAP with...
If we weren't a regional PSAP, we'd get about $40,000.
And if, the fact that we're a regional PSAP, that should really be, be shared equally, the credit for that is shared equally, correct? In terms that, so if there's 130,000...
The companies?
So if we're getting $130,000 in additional money from the state because we're now a regional PSAP, because Whitman has agreed to have us be their primary PSAP.
Correct.
That's because we're their primary PSAP, and we're our own primary PSAP, so now we're regional, so the fact that 65,000 of the credit should go to Whitman and 65,000 of the credit should come to Holbrook, should it not?
It, 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 it all comes to Holbrook, because that's the way it works, because we're a regional center. If we weren't a regional center because of Whitman, if Whitman was to leave today, we would be back down to $40,000.
We'd be back down to $40,000, but we'd also not have additional people that we need, we'd also, if we got rid of Abington and Sharon, not have $100,000 in stipends that we pay, or $15,000 because we're Norfolk County, we pay over $100,000 in stipends because we're a regional center. So that all goes away, we also now become civilian, so we would end up paying close to about $100,000, more than what we have today, to have completely civilian and non-regional.
The cost to go back to the way it was with police on the desk and four civilians...
Wouldn't have police on the desk, the police have already given that up, we could have civilian dispatchers in town.
Okay. So it, the cost of about a million dollars, Kevin?
No, it wouldn't.
It would.
The average, the average salary is $50,000 without stipends, without their stipends for regionalization. That's $50,000, you don't need 10 people anymore, you go with seven people and, and part-timers. So you can cover, as we did before, with seven part-timers, the cost to Holbrook would be about $500,000 in direct costs. That's it. And right now, we're paying close to $400,000 when you factor in just health insurance and direct salaries and expenses that we're paying. So I agree that, that regionalization does save us $100,000. I want to make sure that's clear. Right now, regionalization saves us $100,000 than if we did it as civilian. And we have four more police officers on the street, but those are all done. So the, the idea is, what do we do going forward? And if we're getting $100,000, $130,000 more in FY17 than we did this year, then why, why is Holbrook not being able to utilize some of those money to add a school resource officer, to put it into education? The idea is that, I, I understand that all $130,000 can't come in because we have some additional expenses, but I can't believe that the budgets go, that the budget for dispatch has to go up by $130,000 exclusive of health insurance increases that we're paying for and other increases outside of that, in direct budget, $1200,000. So that's, that's the discussion that I think we, as a finance committee, has to understand better of, why is it going up $130,000?
I think I just laid that out there, and I laid it out on Monday night when you asked me to come.
Well, we'll be, I think we'll be back on Monday, so.
So the, with, with the extra, additional funds that are going to be utilized for FY17, are we looking at shoring up the, the regional center to take on more towns? Like, without that work, obviously, we're a little bit behind the, behind the times, or, you know, is this, is this necessary, spending that hundred, extra $100,000 that we've just been talking about? Is that, I wouldn't say it's necessary, but is that kind of an investment in getting more towns into our system? Because I think that's the key, is the more towns we get, the, the better, the, the better the split will be and the better the, the share. So I get, you know, what if, what if, what if, well, on the other end of the coin, well, what if we get more towns, you know, and what does that look like, so.
I think you're absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, but a lot of this $130,000 that we're getting is to plug holes, fill gaps that we have today, because we keep going back to the town, asking for more, asking for more. And we want to be self-sufficient. I mean, we level funded our budget this year, we took a cut again this year, we're back to FY13 funding at this point, which doesn't even cover the four original fire dispatch, dispatches that was covering this from this, this funding. So I think we're getting there, we just...
Healthy discussion.
Just a quick question.
If...
How much, this piece has come up, and we haven't asked for, you said you had to get back to the town for more money, please tell us what that is, or if you don't have it figured out on Monday night.
I, I don't know exactly, because I wasn't the department head at the time, but I think it was around $20,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, do you want to just take us home on, I guess we're up to debt now?
Yeah.
And just, I guess, I mean, there's no notes necessarily here for us, but, I mean, just a quick overview.
Yep, a couple of things, obviously, we have the, a good chunk of the school debt in there, as outside 2.5, which is offset at the bottom as debt exclusion, so that's, that cancels itself out in terms of the budget. We have, for short-term inside debt, we added, it went up by 85,000 for the Pine Street, Sycamore Street lights, that we'd agreed to pay that over 10 years, so we added the 85,000 there. And I guess I had, I'd added, maybe since a prior version, subsequent to the last finance committee that I was at, we had a debt of, a short-term borrowing that I had had coming out of capital, but it belongs here. So we moved it back into the general fund, so. And that's, and that's what it is, you know, that's, that's, that's what the debt's at.
So the 354,000 plus the interest, so 367, one could, one could logically say that that is all for capital payments, or payments for capital projects that were prior approved by the Capital Planning Committee, if you want to think of it in a capital way.
That's right, it's all, it's all capital.
Okay.
And then employee benefits, Kevin Costa mentioned how health insurance was up for, just under 4.8%. These are just, you know, these are the benefits that we, that we have and that go up, and that we have limited control over, limited control over.
With the employee benefits, is this, does this count, is this town, town side, or is this town in school?
So this is town side.
Town side, okay.
And obviously, I think, one of the big things the finance committee deals with every year is, is health insurance, and it's a big budget driver, it takes up a big chunk of available revenues every year, and it increases significantly. Really, there's two big reasons that it, that it increases significantly for the town. One is the share, at a 90-10 split, 90% on the town side, it's a very generous program for the employees, and it causes significant increase to the, because we're bearing 90% of the increase. The additional thing is, I think that because we have that 90-10 split, we have a higher percentage of people that end up picking the most, the highest cost plan, because the impact to them is relatively small. We have some people that are, I just know our share is 21,000, and then I think the next family plan is a lot of people on a $16,000 plan, is the town share. That's a $5,000 difference to the town, but to the employee, it's 550 pre-tax, post-tax, it's 400 bucks. So there's, there's not a huge incentive to shop the programs and say, what is the real cost to me and the, and the cost impact? So I think that's something that should be looked at, and it can't be looked at for this budget because of the timing of how the GIC works, is, is our overall health insurance plan. Are we in the, is it right to be in GIC? You know, we entered GIC, it's going to be 10 years ago, next year, you know, it's, I think it's worth a healthy review as well as the, the share breakdown, is that still appropriate at a 90-10 split?
And then coming up with a plan for, you know, what, what, how to move forward, because, you know, maybe that's not a sustainable plan, and that, that's not necessarily me speaking, yes, I'm, I'm saying it, but, you know, society has moved away from, from a 90-10 share, you know, decades ago. And so it's, it's a very, it's a very rich plan, and I think there's an incentive for people, you know, if we look at it, you know, our employees are probably the, the benefit provider for their family, because their spouse's plan or significant other's plan is, is not as rich. So we're getting, we're getting more take by our, by our employees. So, I mean, not, not a, we're not going to solve it tonight, but I think strategically we have to look at it, you know, long-term, where, where does this go? Because I don't know how sustainable it's going to be, you know, 10, 20, 30 years down the road.
So it's, just to, so the board understands, I know the finance committee does, and I know Brian's here, is the, the public employee, what's the C, committee? PEC? PEC, the town's PEC, they, they include representatives from each of the unions, and the non-union has a representative there, too, I believe. No? Okay.
Retirees.
And retirees. And the... And the GIC contract, our agreement with GIC has, is through fiscal year '17, is that correct? So, we, so more, we're gonna be negotiating and discussing this in fiscal year '17. You will be as a board and, and PEC will, they'll be, you know, we, how many years is the contract? Three years? It's every three years, okay.
Okay. Great. Okay. Anything else, Tim, to round up where we, where we are?
No, the, no, the other item, to end it, and then I'd like to just comment on what I think are strong positives and negatives here. The negative, the, the clear negative to this budget is, on capital improvement, I have zero in there, coming out of the operating cost for capital. So, that, you know, that's not ideal. I, I applaud the, all the efforts that we've done in the past to try to include capital costs in, in the operating budget, and it's a good practice to have. In, in this case, I think, given the fact that we, we've purchased a lot of capital over the past few years, and we're still paying for that, and we're able to pay it. We have a, a bit of a, a balance within our capital stabilization, capital trust fund to, to cover the cost when you include the free cash distribution for this year. So, there's no great risk to that, to, to making those payments and growing that fund in the future, especially as you, you know, as we listen to Mr. Brown today, we have some, some money that's going to be coming in, in the form of this tax title money. You know, we could, we could spend a little bit of effort trying to, you know, it's all gonna fall into free cash. We might want to look at our free cash policy and, and have more go to capital, with the expectation that more is going to be coming in, maybe not at the close of '16, but certainly the close of '17. And so, so that's a negative in the budget. The other negative is, you know, all of these little things that we wanted to add that we can't, you know, the HR and the other support functions.
But I think the important thing is that we, we continue talking about them, we continue bringing them up, we continue asking for them from a department head standpoint, because it shouldn't go away, because one, one day we'll be able to do it.
That's right.
And we want to make sure that, you know, we have a pretty good plan and, and some of the ideas that are out there, it's just a matter of, you know, finding the, finding the money, so.
And so, some of the, some of the positives, and some of these positives relate to the free cash, you know, all of our snow and ice can be covered, including this year's, the outstanding from last year and this year's can be covered through our free cash. So, last year, and, you know, we had to carry some on the recap, this year, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that. So, that's a positive. Kept local receipt estimates steady where they're at, and that's, that's a sort of an unsung hero, but that's always a positive thing, because you hope that your local receipts will grow, but I, I have contended that that margin we have between budgeted local receipts and actual is not, it needs to be a wider margin, right? So, I'm glad we're able to keep that steady, and, and I would like to see that stay steady over the next few years. I think, you know, funding the schools at 3 percent is a positive thing. They may not all agree with that, but I think, I know they were originally asking for significantly more than that, but if we're able to, we're able to do that in this budget, I think it's, I think it's a positive thing. And not a positive or negative, but, you know, we, the capital improvement committee did, did a great job looking at all of the requests and, and bringing it down to a very lean request this year. There's only three items, if you look at the capital budget there. We have a, a dump truck for the DPW tasers for the police department, and the integrated financial software system that we've discussed. So, those are the three items that are on the capital plan. So, that, that totals 101,000 of new capital costs. But we have to pay, our payments for prior year purchases in capital are 253,000 in '17, and then another 202,000 already, actually be about 200 and, another 200, roughly 250,000 in, in '18. So, so that's, that's pretty much, I think, where we're at. As I said, as I opened up, the, the intent is not to, you know, my hope is that this, through the Board of Selectmen, is a way to inform the finance committee and, and give them a sense of, of what direction the Board of Selectmen is interested in going in. They will continue with their budget process, I will continue to attend their meetings, they will bring a budget to town meeting. That's what I expect will happen, as, as it happened in the past. So, that's all I have. I'm hoping that the board...
Board of any, any questions? I mean, we went through, went through it in fairly, fairly good detail based on, you know, the, some of the anomalies that we had from year to year. You know, should we, we should vote to, to approve the, the budget as, as we have?
I think, I think any vote would be to, to recommend...
That's what I'm saying.
To the finance committee for consideration.
Exactly. Okay. So, I want to turn a...
One second. As Chairman of the Capital Improvement, me and Tim had talked about that, and the reason why we didn't seem to put money in that we could use to somewhere is because we do have money set aside, next year's another big year, and then after that, it falls off, and that extra 100, 150,000 that we can use in the budget this year works out. So, I agree with how, how Tim had come up with nothing for the capital improvement for this fiscal year.
That makes sense.
Chairman, I, I believe that the finance committee in this budget still have room for more discussion, if we take a recommendation, to vote a recommendation.
Well, we won't...
I think it'd be...
I think the timing doesn't, the timing doesn't work out, though.
But Mr. Goode continued to come to our meetings, and we eyeing out, because we're gonna have one and that's...
Yeah, no, no, no. I, I think that the, we're talking about decimal dust here, I think in theory, the Selectmen like the, the direction that the budget is going, knowing that we're not gonna hold everyone to, you know, the dollar amount, you know, at each specific line, but I think, you know, unless there's some really, some explosions, you know, in, in these, in these conversations where, where things are radically different than what we just kind of reviewed...
Well, I believe, I believe there's a couple spots where we're radically different.
Okay. So, I mean, so the, so the board, I think, you know, supports, you know, kind of what we have, and we, we encourage the dialogue to continue, but we, we do, we do ask that, you know, you take, you know, the, the considerations that we put forward, you know, as, as guidance in, in the process.
I think that, it's, it's been important for us to always get the feedback from the Selectmen, you've always been invited to our meetings, you always are, and this has been a good process, I think, working with the Newtown administrator to go through this budget, to understand what some of his philosophies are, as well as the Board of Selectmen's and some of the, the areas that you want to see, you know, expanded on where we can, or having your influence on a budget request to us is important, just like we have from all the department heads, as well as the, the school committee, and that our job, of course, is to try to balance the, all of the requests and all of the recommendations, to try to make sure that it represents a balanced budget, which the finance committee thinks is the, is the best for the town, taking all of that information into consideration. You know, obviously, zeroing out capital and putting it into operating as opposed to capital, that does now raise the, raise the floor for your operating budget in the following year, because you can't go back into any of these operating departments and take away $150,000. So, that's, I know that's gonna be a concern of some members, of, of zeroing it out totally, but there are some, some offsets there, some, some additional revenues, but it does, this would take it out of our operating budget. But overall, you know, we do appreciate the process, and we are gonna take it back and, and add it to our, it does, will influence us, influence us significantly in our deliberations. We'll be meeting next Monday to take this into account, as well as our prior meetings, and then hopefully from that, we'll be close to our own recommendation on a balanced budget, and if not at that meeting, at the following meeting. We'll be voting a balanced budget. A goal is by April 11th, we will be voting a budget for town meeting, so town meeting has enough time, as well as department heads, to, to understand it. But our hope is that, so our hope for all the department heads here in the room, is that April 4th, our meeting on Monday, we will have a good draft budget that would be sent out to department heads for their review, so that they can come back to us the following week and say, wait, you gave me too much money, I don't need that much, you know, take some away, kind of thing. And then formally vote one on April 11th.
May you have all those conversations. Okay. So, thank you very much for the efforts, Tim and Margie, the FinCom, all of the various departments. It's a, it's a good process. I feel, I feel better about the process this year than I have in, in several years past, and, and the hope of this is to, you know, remove the drama from town meeting floor, so that everyone is kind of in agreement before we get there, and, you know, what we propose kind of sails through, hopefully without, without any issue, so.
And that's because we've had open discussions, and obviously, you know, if anybody wants to get a town meeting floor, they can, but because we've had open discussions and everybody's an understanding of what's happening and we're transparent, that's why we would be able to have some...
Agreed. Or, you know, just acknowledging where the differences are. You know, you might not get there, but at least you're going into town meeting knowing that, okay, this is, there's two different points of view on a particular line, and, and, you know, you know, you know where you're at.
Absolutely. Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone. So, before we go on to the next, next article, or next part of business, with, with sadness, we accepted a resignation this week from the town accountant. Cindy Brennan has given us, I know it's been coming a long, long time, she's been threatening for years, but she actually finally put it, finally put it on paper. So, she started as the Assistant Town Accountant and Accountant Principal Clerk in April of 1997, so given us a tremendous amount of, of her working life. So, she'll still be with us, she'll be retiring at the end of the, the fiscal year, so June 30th, 2016. So, on behalf of a very grateful town, thank you for all those efforts, we do appreciate it, and hopefully there's something in the, in the future for you, that, so you won't be a stranger in, in town, but thank you again for all of your... So, more to follow as we get into June. And so, now, our next order of business is to approve and execute the contract between the town of Holbrook and CD Masonry. Did we not do this last week?
No, you didn't approve the contract, you, you go ahead, you were here, I mean, you approved the, the bids, awarded, awarded the bid.
You awarded the bid, okay.
Yeah. So, now, now it's just approving the contract.
Okay. Where's the summary page, Tim?
Summary page on the contract? There was a summary page. It's a, it's 20... Let me see the... It's the same amount, let's see, it's, it's the same amount here, agreement? Yes. So, it's $26,800, and the scope of work includes the repointing of sections of the front of the building, repointing of the north-east corner, no, northwest corner, back corner, replacing the vents in the back, there's five or six vents in the back that are gonna be replaced, that's an issue with our insurance carrier, and it'll be an issue for the birds that like to fly in and out of there. And replacement of the steps that are right out here to the left entrance.
Mr. Chairman, I approve and execute a contract between the town of Holbrook and CD Masonry Restoration, Inc. of Oxford, Mass. for services related to masonry repairs to the exterior of Town, Holbrook Town Hall in the amount of $26,800.
So, we have a motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Sheehan. All those in favor? That's not great, thank you. And so, this, these, these funds are being paid for by the, by the grant that we obtained from Representative Mariano's office.
That's right, the, the state earmark.
Okay. Great. Do we have any citizens' concerns this evening? Thank you for your patience with a little bit longer than a normal meeting, but if anyone has anything to say, say it now. Okay? And we will adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy as it relates to collective bargaining with union personnel, which is the firefighters' union, and not to return to open session. But actually, before we, we take that roll call vote, wanted to also advertise the fact that town elections are next Tuesday, April 5th, so there's a full slate of candidates that are all volunteers in your community, your neighbors, and your friends, and we, everyone deserves a vote, so we, we want the turnout to be very high, and we would appreciate everyone taking a couple minutes to do your civic duty, and good luck to all the candidates that are, that are putting themselves out there. We do appreciate, you know, the extra efforts that you're doing to volunteer, because it certainly isn't easy on occasion. So, April 5th, the, the elections are taking place, and then the parking situation will be taken care of, right? We're dealing, it'll be an empty parking lot for voters.
Were we doing that this time around? I'll have to ask the schools what they decided on that.
I believe that's what was the case. Mr. Taggart?
Yeah. Could you mention that if any, oh, we need to write the polls on Tuesday, call the Council on Aging?
Couldn't say it any better. So, Council on Aging is doing any type of transportation from inside the confines of Holbrook, right? To, to vote. Depending on how this election is going, there's, 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 they might be busting some people in. So, any, any residents who need, need transportation, certainly, call the, the Council on Aging, and they'll be happy to provide service with a smile. All right? Great. Thank you very much. So, to go to executive session, a roll call vote?
Dan, yes.
Matt, yes.
Rick, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Good night.
[inaudible]
Coming up with our differences from your little sheet.